Engaging some communications back and forth as to what that means. Give all of you some information. As a follow-up for that, for you to engage with the board. Again, nothing's been proposed or approved. Nothing's been proposed for approval. This is merely the beginning. Lots of questions, there are lots of rumors, there's live discussion. We want to make sure. I will ask for a couple of things as we go through the meeting tonight. About this topic, about the park, about the discussions. We ask that everyone keep it professional. Second thing I would ask is to make sure that if you're not up here at the podium speaking, operating and conducting the meeting. With that, if there are any... You don't have to sign up to speak. What will happen is, once we get through the process and the development is proposed, BOC answers questions. You simply raise your hand and invite those speakers to come up. Once the proposal's made and they've shown what they're doing... I would let them make their proposal. Let's see what we're doing because if we were... They may answer your question later on their proposal, so I would vet the proposal. Follow-up with those questions to make sure. We have a Board of Commissioners' meeting at 7:00. Two hours to kind of go through and vet this. Developers are... Will stay after the Board of Commissioners' meeting, so if there's some... If we run out of time, then we'll make an effort to get everyone's questions written down. So, we'll go ahead and get started. I'll turn it over to the mayor and they'll open up the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I will tell all of you, we do have the email that someone sent us with the concern residents of Cox Run subdivision, that document. So, we all have a copy. The developers have a copy. So, your concerns are duly noted and we all have those. Yes?
We did not give that to developers. We were asked if we gave permission to give that to developers, but we didn't have a consensus of our group. So, we didn't say that that can go to the developers yet. So, I just want to kind of state that because I want to make sure that members of our subdivision that were kind of, you know, weren't sure if that was the final. I want to make sure that that's...
So, am I to understand that the concerns you listed are not necessarily your concerns? I can't hear you very well.
I'm sorry. Mr. Butler had to give permission for that information to be go-ahead to the developers. And I just want to say, because I have neighbors in here that are... That we've all come together and some people were saying, "Sure, go-ahead." And some people were saying, "Oh, look, we still have some... We don't know for sure if we want that to happen." So, I never... We never gave permission for that information to the developers before this meeting. But if it's helpful, we're grateful it is. I just want to make sure our neighbors get that.
Well, then, I apologize. Once I get an email, then that's kind of public information. So, for the matter of this meeting, it was easier for the developers to have those concerns rather than us try to come back later and address those concerns. So, I will now turn it over to the developers for your presentation to the board.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Commissioners. We appreciate the opportunity and appreciate you at all, as well as Mr. Collins and the staff setting this up. We appreciate everybody coming out tonight. We heard back when we went through the Planning Commission, we were... Our team was a little bit caught off-guard with some of the concerns that were expressed then that night by a few of the residents about some notice requirements and things like that. So, I think this is really good. I'm really glad that we're having this opportunity to all have this discussion together and talk about some things. I had gone out and met with a few folks along Wayne's Lane and had some conversations. And so, our team tonight, I have Mr. Jay Easter with Reagan Smith, who's my main planning consultant that I work with. My name's Dan Allen with Davis Drive Investments, and I'm the one that's been putting the project together. We also have Tiffany Giordano with Reagan Smith. She is the traffic engineer that's done the traffic study. And then behind me, I have Mr. Dave McGowan and John Byer with Regent Homes, and they'll be the ones building the homes in the neighborhood if it goes forward and it is approved. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Easter. And we have a PowerPoint presentation, just to give you a general idea of what's coming and kind of how we're going to step through this tonight, based on the comments at the Planning Commission, at the last Board of Commissioners' meeting when we had this item up. Several things were expressed. We've talked again with a few people along Wayne's Lane in the area. We do have this letter, I think, that we were just referencing a minute ago. I just got it when I walked in the room tonight, so I really haven't had a chance to review it, but I promise we'll definitely go through it and look at all this and try to take it into account. And I'm sure some of those questions will come out as we go through tonight. But basically, what we've tried to do tonight with our presentation is lay out a little bit of the history of how we've gotten to this point. So, we're going to have some slides that show the very first version of the plan that we submitted at Planning Commission, so you can see that. And then, we'll show some of the changes we made after that, after we heard from the Planning Commissioners and heard from some of the residents and went and met with them, and show some of those things. And then, we've also taken several different areas of the plans that were highlighted or questions were asked about buffers and lot sizes and all kinds of things like that. And so, we've tried to create a series of slides to kind of zoom in and focus on several of those things, so you guys can all see exactly what's going on there and give us some feedback and just kind of step through all of those things as we go. And then, I suspect there'll be some questions and all of that. So, as Mr. Easter's kind of going through the presentation, if there's any questions, comments, anything like that, feel free to jump in. We'd heard some feedback, I think from Commissioner Butler, if I remember correctly, kind of wanting this to be sort of like... I'm sorry. Is that better? I apologize. Somewhat of a model here similar to how the city of Franklin does sort of joint workshops before things actually come forward, before they're board. And so, that's how we've kind of prepared the presentation or kind of walked through it. So, usually, we'll kind of go through it and then have some interaction. It's a little bit informal and just ask questions as we go. And we're here to answer everything as best we can, so.
Let me say this. I ask that everyone make notes if you have questions, and then at the end, we will go through any questions you may have. Yes, sir. No, I'm so sorry. So, just use your microphones.
Let me just check that. Is that better?
That's much better. Thank you.
My apologies.
So, just remember, use your microphones.
How about now?
Now you are.
There we go. All right. Well, thank you all again. I am Jay Easter with Reagan Smith. I'm the landscape architect and planner working on this project. We began this project back early in the summer. Our initial meeting with staff in June, where we looked at the site, the 124 acres, looked at the existing zoning, had a rough concept of what we wanted to do, talked through it with staff, talked through what the proposed zoning would need to be for the concept, what the existing land uses around the site, the city's land use plan, being that... And let's see, oops. Y'all forgive me, I've got to get used to the button here. Our site is right here that we're proposing. We're surrounded by the R-40 zoning, as well as the R-20 zoning here with the Cox Run neighborhood, some commercial zoning to the west, and then also an approved R-20 PUD not too far down the road from us. With that, we went back, the team got together, and came up with the plan that was originally submitted to the Planning Commission. This is the original plan that was submitted to the Planning Commission, and after hearing comments at the commission and from the neighbors that showed up at the commission giving comments, we did receive approval at the Planning Commission with a list of conditions, which we then went back, modified the plan, and resubmitted to the Board of Commissioners. This is the plan that was in front of the Board of the Commissioners and the plan we'll be discussing tonight. Biggest notable change on this plan that came out of the Planning Commission was, originally, we had two large estate lots here. So, originally, we were proposing 181 homes on 181 lots, and we dropped the two big estate lots. So, the proposal now is for 172 homes on lots that are ranging from 10,000 square feet to 21,000 square feet. We do...
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, those estate lots, why are you not... Can you tell us why you're not building those on those estate lots? Is it because of the stream and the cost?
Actually, ma'am, when we met with some of the residents out along Wayne's Lane, it was a specific request that we drop those estate lots out of the plan completely and set aside as open space and additional buffer for those folks that lived along Wayne's Lane. So, that actually was just us responding to those conversations.
So, were those lots... Is that... Are those the lots that had the stream going through it that would have cost you, or it would have been expensive to actually develop those lots? And were those lots considered in the total acreage when you did your density calculations?
Originally, in the original submitted plan, they were considered in the density, and then in the revised plan, they were backed out, and they were not considered in the density.
Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, yes, ma'am. That's not a problem. So, the lots ranging from 10,000 square feet to 21,000 square feet. We are setting aside 48 acres of open space in the neighborhood here. Also, that 48 acres also includes the sewer drip field, as well as preserving and honoring all of the streams and stream buffers for the streams that cut through the site. And so, our open space is here, a large concentration of open space here that backs up to Bowie Park, open space here and here, as well as the median through the middle of the neighborhood, and a pocket park here in the neighborhood that is just a little bit over an acre. The drip field area that we have set aside is approximately 16 acres of that open space, and it is illustrated here with the green color. We do have our entrance off of Wayne's Lane. As we come in from Wayne's Lane, you drive through open space where we're providing a dense evergreen buffer, which was one of the revisions that we made from the original plan at the Planning Commission to the plan that was submitted to the BOC, as well as committing to the adjacent neighbors that we would build a four-foot rail fence to help delineate the separation between their property line and the neighborhood property line. So, as you drive into the neighborhood from Wayne's Lane, you have the homes along our drive. We have our one-acre or so pocket park here, which contains the mail kiosk. We have three mail kiosks throughout the neighborhood, one located here, one located here in this open space, and then another one located down here in the south open space, which also serves as a park and potential trailhead in connection to Bowie Park. And then, throughout the neighborhood, you can see most of the homes back up to open space, and we are providing connections to adjacent undeveloped property here and here. Now, along the perimeter of the property, we are providing a 25-foot landscape buffer around the entire project, and where homes back up to that buffer, we will be supplement... We will be... Well, around the whole 25-foot buffer, we will be providing landscape evergreen screens to supplement the existing vegetation to provide the dense buffer between the homes and the neighborhood. And y'all forgive me. I just need to make sure I highlight all the changes. All right. Let's go to the next slide. So, the next slide helps show the distribution of lots and the lot sizes. Now, the light yellow color is where we have our typical lot, which is 10,000 square feet. The medium orange color shows lots that are between 10,000 and 15,000 square feet. And then, the darker brown shows the distribution of lots within the neighborhood that are over 15,000 square feet. So, as you can see, these lots that buffer here and here, none of them are typical minimum 10,000 square feet. They range from over 10,000 square feet to about 12,000 square feet.
And for people who may have a hard time visualizing 10,000 and 15,000, can you tell us kind of about what that is in acreage?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Can you repeat, Mayor? I couldn't hear you.
How big is that acreage-wise, for people who have a hard time figuring out, visualizing 10,000 square feet?
Roughly a quarter of an acre to a third of an acre.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, these are some blow-ups that show the changes between the original submitted plan to the Planning Commission and our entrance, and the revised entrance off of Wayne's Lane that was submitted with the revised plans to the BOC. You can see here where we increased the evergreen planting along both sides of the road and the property line, as well as there is a little skew in the exit drive that helped direct the headlights from pointing directly into the front porch and backyards to neighbors across the street.
Now... When I went and met with those neighbors specifically that were living right there, you know, they had a lot of concerns and comments about just, you know, when we're on our front porch, you know, it's nice, it's relaxing out here, we're able to sit here, we're able to look out. Not only do we see directly right there, but we can also see further out across to the park, and had expressed concerns about, you know, lights coming in their front door and everything like that. So, well, that geometry on the entrance is a little bit different than what you would typically see on standard road design in terms of coming in right at 90 degrees. That's based on us actually looking at where the stop bar would be if a car was exiting and stopped right there to leave the neighborhood. And so, we put that skew in there a little bit. If you were to look and follow that out across, that basically hits the gap right in between the two houses across from it. There's a pretty good bit of space there. So, we have intentionally tried to address that concern as best we can, so it minimizes the impacts directly on those folks across the street. And then, the other part of that is, the original plan, we had fairly... I'd say probably fairly sparse landscaping at the entrance. There were just a few trees, and then there's a little bit of a median strip there to kind of separate it. And you can see from up in the upper-left corner to the change that we made based on their feedback, you know, there was very much a concern, like, you know, we really don't want to look right out off of our front porch and see the full neighborhood just right there in our face. And, you know, so the conversation that we had was, you know, there is a road there, there is an entrance to the neighborhood there, you know, down the portion of the road, you know, there's no trees necessarily in the road, but what we can do is around all of that, really beef up the landscaping, and instead of just having more... You know, the initial thought was kind of more like deciduous trees, so that would be trees that like lose their leaves in the fall and things like that. As we heard that, kind of went back and said, you know, what we could do is we could... And you can kind of see it there in the lower-right, right there at the road. We've got a couple of those bigger trees. But then, as we come back, we tweaked that geometry and made that median area in the middle a little bit bigger, and the intent is for all of that in the middle and then all along the sides to plant that very densely, essentially with an evergreen screen, so a variety of evergreen plants, so that it's always green, it's always there, and it's always acting as visual mitigation to what's going on as you further get down into the neighborhood. So, we did try and address those concerns, took them very seriously, and really, really tried to make that as good a situation as we possibly could. Thank you.
The next slide is a blow-up of the typical 10,000-square-foot lot. It's showing our minimum width of 80 feet, the depth of 125 feet with the required setbacks per the zoning ordinance. So, this is the typical lot, and then our corner lots are a little wider to accommodate the front yard setback on both sides and maintain the same building envelope. Now, this is a blow-up of the originally... Go back one? Okay.
Just wanted to add one other thing to that. It came up at the Planning Commission, and then I believe it also came up at the last Board of Commissioners' meeting, and I believe Commissioner Butler mentioned it. There was a concern about the depth of the lots and the setbacks and driveways and the interaction with the sidewalk, and there was a concern that, you know, if a car was parked in the driveway, that it might, you know, overhang into the sidewalk and block part of the sidewalk or something like that. So, I had talked about it a little more at the Planning Commission, but we didn't really get much of a chance to talk about it at the Board of Commissioners' meeting. So, just wanted to show in this illustration there, we do have an illustrative example of a vehicle parked in the driveway. And, you know, for reference, like, your typical parking space, you know, like going to Publix or Walmart in the parking lot, is typically nine feet wide by 18 feet deep. And we've got at least 20 feet here for that driveway depth. So, there is enough room to park even a substantial-sized SUV there and not have it hang back over the sidewalk. So, just wanted to point that out and show that we feel like we've got that covered. There are going to be some of these lots in the neighborhood as well, where we will have... We'll be wide enough and have the option to actually turn the garage and potentially do some side-loading treatments as well, so it's not necessarily that they'll all be front-loaded either. So, and certainly in those situations, you wouldn't have a vehicle in danger of backing out or hanging out over a sidewalk.
So, are these houses typically two-car garages or one-car garage? Two? Thank you.
Okay. This is a comparison of the southern property line where we back up to Bowie Park from what was originally submitted at the Planning Commission, and then concerns that were heard at the Planning Commission and how we addressed it. So, we did... Originally, we had proposed a 25-foot landscape buffer along the southern property line of Bowie Park, where it would be... We would be preserving any and all existing plant material, trees and buffer that was there, as well as supplementing it with evergreen plant material to provide the desired buffer. And at the Planning Commission, there was discussion on whether or not the 25-foot buffer was deep enough, if we could provide more buffer, which we went back and revised, and we've added an additional 10 feet to that buffer in the form of a landscape easement on the back of the lots that would be planted with evergreen plant material and maintained by the homeowners association. There was also concerns brought up, it's my understanding, about the runoff from the back of the lots and the, I guess, contaminated water from the yards entering the park. So, we agreed with staff to develop a riparian-type buffer planting when we come back with construction drawings, incorporating plant materials and natural mechanisms to help filter that water as it comes into Bowie Park. And then, we still are maintaining the trailhead, or still proposing the trail connection to Bowie Park, as well as incorporating bollards into that to prevent vehicles from driving in, but they would be removable in case an emergency vehicle or possibly a maintenance vehicle needs to access this portion of the park. And we're proposing a four-foot black wooden full-rail fence along the boundary to help delineate the separation between... Within the buffer area, to delineate the separation between the park and the neighborhood. Now, this is a blow-up of the trailhead park at the end of the neighborhood, and you can see we have a proposed parking area containing 20 parking spaces, a pavilion area, grill, benches, trash receptacles, a... What would... If we are allowed to connect to the park, a park map and trailhead map that would show your location and where you're going into the park, as well as another one of the neighborhood mail kiosk and an open playfield. And then, these are some character photos or example photos of what some of those elements may be, you know, the wooden-covered pavilion, park benches, trash receptacles, drinking fountain, mailbox cluster, the pedestal grill, the removable bollards, bike racks, and then a trail map and park map located at the trailhead. And this is an exhibit where we overlaid the existing map of Bowie Park's trail system, showing where the neighborhood was in relation to the trails, where the potential connection would be, which is this purple line right here. So, it's approximately 250 feet of additional trail that would be constructed to tie to the park's perimeter trail. And in the beginning, as we discussed with staff and agreed, this would all be coordinated with the park and with staff on the exact location, the exact routing, the exact construction practices that we use to build the trail, so that there is... There is a good benefit to the park. Now, these are the examples of... These aren't the examples. These are the off-site roadway improvements that came out of our traffic study as part of the project. We conducted a full traffic study for the project, which Tiffany prepared, and these were the solutions that we came up with, worked with staff to come up with the best solutions possible to address the traffic improvement needs and to be able to work within the existing right-of-way. So, I'm going to let Tiffany walk through the traffic improvements and answer any questions.
Are you doing... Are these the last slides?
Yeah.
Okay. So, one of the concerns that staff had was that the existing Wayne's Lane is very wide, and when you come out to the road, you know, you can kind of come out this way, or you can come out more at a 90-degree angle, and it wasn't very clear. So, what we are proposing to do is to create more of a 90-degree... I believe we have about 80 degrees here. Turn and make this little hatched area grass, so that it delineates the road, so that you can have a clear turning way. Sorry. We also are going to be extending this driveway here, so that they can have access to this new realigned road. After conducting the traffic study, it was noted by staff and myself that the existing storage length of this left-turn lane at Cox Pike and Highway 100 was not sufficient to hold the expected number of queue during the peak hour. So, we are proposing here to extend that left-turn lane and create a little bit longer of a taper, so that it will be able to hold the expected queue. Not shown here is, we will also be doing a right-turn lane here and modifying this traffic signal to provide a right-turn overlaps. Yeah.
All right. And now, these are some of the examples of the homes that would be in the neighborhood, and I'm going to ask Mr. McGowan to slide in, and I'll step out.
Thank you very much. My name is David McGowan. I've been a resident of Middle Tennessee since 1988. The company Regent Homes will be acting as a developer and builder of the community, along with the engineers and all that are currently here today. We've been building homes in Middle Tennessee since 2004. We currently build about 300 a year. We are... We are currently building in Spring Hill, Franklin, Smyrna, Nolansville, Nashville, and Huntsville, Alabama. You can actually see some of our homes in Otter Creek here in Fairview. We're very proud of the homes that we built in Otter Creek. We mainly are planning this home, this community to be homes for family buyers. We know that Williamson County attracts the family buyer and that's who we're basically are targeting with the design of the homes. The majority of the homes will probably be three car garage homes. We typically will build with a side entry garage and if we don't build with a side entry, we're building in with a courtyard entry. So, if you look at the pictures of the homes up there, those are homes that we're currently building that you would find in numerous of our neighborhood. If you look on the right-hand side, the house in the middle, the white house, that is the model home that is currently in Otter Creek. We're currently out of lots in Otter Creek, but hope to have some come home this year. That home right there will fit on one of these lots. We need a 24-foot side yard in order to build that home. And typically, the homes are around 50-foot wide and so if you think about a side yard that we have to deal with, we can get that in there. If you look at the home right below that, that home is also built in Otter Creek. That is called a Millbrook and you can see, we call that the courtyard entry. Again, we do everything we can not to have the garages face directly on the street. If we can do a courtyard entry, we feel it minimizes the effect of the garage on the front of the house. And so, we do everything we can to be able to not have garage doors look directly on the fence. As well, we typically try to embellish the house, any corners, we try to do wraparound porches. Again, which one do I hit next? And so, you can see the homes. And so, although the guidelines would allow 1,700 square feet, we see the majority of these homes probably averaging about 2,400 to 2,500 square feet being three, four, and five-bedroom homes. Again, these are some of the homes. Again, these homes, some of them are actually built in Fairview in Otter Creek. The one that's in color in the top right there, that is called the Ridgeland, that one actually is in Otter Creek as well. So, we have a wide variety of homes. We do allow some customizations, you might want to go back, to those homes. Again, we're very, very proud to be part of this community to build homes. I'll give you some background on myself. I have served as the chairman and a currently board member of the Venture Science Center of Greater Nashville. I've served as chairman of the Habitat of Greater Nashville and current board member. I have served on advisory board in Middle Tennessee State University. I'm currently president of Gold Bill Tennessee, which is an organization trying to get young men to come into our industry because our industry is so busy, we have trouble finding young people who want to come to work in this industry. And the Middle Tennessee program that we're involved in is called Construction Management Technology. You can go there and actually get a degree and come out and be hired as a superintendent to work in the home building industry. Currently, our company has over 12 graduates that have graduated from the Middle Tennessee State University. So, I am the owner and the president of the company. I have a lot of family members working in the company and we enjoy building homes and building communities. As you've seen, some of the amenities that are in there, we always like to put playgrounds for kids, we like to put walking areas, dog parks. If you read the newspaper on a regular basis, you will see some of our other communities that we do. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you guys and answer any questions I can later on.
Mr. McGowan? That really concludes the bulk of the PowerPoint presentation that we have. There was, Jay, if you don't mind going back to the buffer slide, I wanted to talk just a little bit more. I'll just kind of talk through it. That has been, throughout all the discussions and various meetings and conversations that we've had, I just wanted to take a minute and just go in a little bit more detail on the potential of how this project can interact with the park and how some of these things could work together. Because we have a few different elements potentially coming together. As we've been working through the process, talking with staff and listening and reading through the regulations, it's very apparent to our team that Fairview really over the past year, year and a half, has had a lot of engagement, a lot of discussion about updating a comprehensive plan and there's been lots of talk about connectivity, walkability, and all of those sorts of elements and things like that. So, one of the things that I got really excited about as we were really first putting this together and really looking at it is the opportunity to really try and help create some of that. And there is, there really is a nice opportunity to do something here with really what we're proposing. One of the things that I did is, so I've gone out and walked the whole edge of the property and looked kind of from where the neighbor would be, neighborhood would be and looked into the park. And then also, I went and met with Mr. Sullivan. One day, he was kind enough to load me up in a gator and we kind of rode that whole perimeter trail and really kind of looked at, all right, what's it look like from the trail and in the park back up at the property? And what does all that look like? Because if you're really gonna, if you're gonna design the buffer right and try and get these elements together, I keep referring to it as really trying to make sure that we set the edge and get the edge right. Where does Bowie Park kind of end and where does a neighborhood begin and how does all of that interface? One of the things that really stood out to me particularly as I was riding with Mr. Sullivan and looking from the trail and from the park up to the property is that the area on that perimeter trail and really in the park, it falls away. So, it is below, if you will, it's below where the neighborhood would be. And so, as we've had kind of some of these conversation concerns about the buffer and views and what does all this look and feel like, one of the things I've been looking at is, we kind of talked about it a little bit. We've initially proposed a 25-foot buffer, but then we added another 10-foot to it basically to get a total depth of 35 feet. Part of the thinking that's going into that is because, try and get us all if we can to kind of think in 3D for a second instead of 2D. Because it's easy to go, okay, 35 feet and just bam bam and assume it's all flat, but it's not really, right? And so, I believe that there's a way to structure this buffer with the right kind of evergreen plantings where if we handle the massing, we can actually address two different kinds of view sheds. There's a view shed of, hey, I'm down on the trail and I'm in the park and when I look up back towards the property, the sense that I'm getting from the comments that are being made is that we don't really want to necessarily see the neighborhood, right? We don't want to see the houses, we don't necessarily want to see all of those elements if we don't have to. Well, we have a geometric advantage there because the trail and the park itself is several feet lower and is down. And so, within that 35 feet, if we properly mass a dense variety of evergreen trees and shrubs, some at a lower level, some at a much higher level, but basically design that, in essence, I'm going to use a term here, try and create a forced perspective with an evergreen wall. I believe there is a way to actually, when you're in the park on the trail looking up, to see just that evergreen wall, but still, if you're in a two-story house along that edge, have a view out that second story window that still can see out just over the tip of that evergreen wall and see the park and block that view. And so, that is a lot of the thinking with what we've proposed and what we're trying to accomplish. We're trying to, we're trying to create a very attractive experience for a very, very nice lot. I think that any of those lots along that edge there, knowing that it's up against the park and being able to have some views and know that nothing's ever necessarily going to be behind you because it's preserved forever, has a lot of appeal. But at the same time, we don't want to create this situation where the view has now become obnoxious and somebody who's riding a horse or walking their dog or just walking with their family in the park and trying to enjoy the nature park or turning right around and seeing the edge of a house or something like that. So, we put quite a bit of time and effort and thought into really trying to frame this correctly so we can create as much of a win-win there in that scenario as possible. And we're, like I said, we're committed to creating and planting essentially that evergreen wall all along that border to create that effect and really try and help set that edge as best as possible. There are a couple of different flavors that, I think if the project is allowed to proceed and go along, as it moves further along into more detailed design stages, we could really start to flesh some of those details out. You know, how we set, we've heard pretty emphatically, we want some sort of fence along the edge to set the edge so you know kind of where Bowie Park ends in relation to where the neighborhood begins and also to control access along there. We've heard a lot of feedback, like we don't want people just entering the park out of their backyard or all over places or anything like that. So, a very dense evergreen screen slash wall along with right at the edge, a nice rustic black four-board fence, pretty typical of what you see around a lot of farms in Middle Tennessee, was kind of our thought just to kind of keep in theming with what you typically see in most other places around us. And then, that all would converge to a point where that trailhead is and the thought is there to really build two nice stone columns slash pillars and really set the edge. We've had some conversations back from the Planning Commission about, there's a little stuff like asphalt in the neighborhood and the walking trail basically up to where the park stops and then having a real nice clean break and transition where, once we leave the neighborhood and go into the park, now it just becomes all natural. I think it would be really unfortunate if we just tried to take a bunch of asphalt or concrete and just run it all the way down, another 400, 500, 600 feet down to try and connect on that trail and really alter the feel of it out there. What I had discussed with staff was basically doing some shored-up treatments that are more natural trail type scenarios that just lay on the existing topography and define where you're supposed to go and get you there without going in and doing a bunch of damage or doing really disturbing much at all in there. We're just trying to direct people there and give them a safe path to kind of go from the neighborhood down to the perimeter trail and then from there, they can go either direction and spread out into the rest of the trails however they see fit. So, I hope that helps address some concerns and questions. I know there's been a lot of, a lot of discussion about those different elements and kind of how all that fits together, but just wanted to try and give a little more clarity on that as I figured there was going to be several questions. So, I think with that, our presentation is largely finished and we're happy to answer any questions you all.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have questions? I have one, in addition to the ones I've already asked. So, when you say that there's the tall evergreens, so when you plant those, do you plan to plant those so that they're already fully mature and tall or are they going to be what I would go to Home Depot and buy and wait 20 years for them to get tall enough to buffer anything if I don't kill them first?
I suspect that it will be likely a mixture of them, but given the importance of it, I would definitely plan on putting definitely some larger, more mature ones in there from the get-go. I don't really, if it were a different project in a different place, I'd probably have a different answer, but given the importance of what's trying to be accomplished here and how it's supposed to work, I think that needs to be done out of the gate from day one and we're willing to commit to that through whatever type of commission or condition or anything else we need.
A lot of times in these type of neighborhoods, people would prefer to have a six-foot fence in the backyard for kids and pets. And we can actually show you some pictures of stuff we've done in the city of Nolansville along Rocky Fork Road where we built a six-foot fence and we maintained the same designed fence all along and then we put a tree buffer in front of that fence that turned out very nice. And so, the four-board fence is very, very popular. At the same time, that is something that we can consider doing, that we would commit that that fence would go along that trail that helped out. We normally stain that with a red wood, dark red wood stain and then put the trees in front of it. And so, that's something that we can look at with you and if you all feel that would be better than the four-board fence, we could do that, which again shields the backyard as well as creates privacy on both sides.
So, on your, on your design, it's got originally submitted plan 25 feet. On the bottom, it says 25 feet, not 35? And I realize that's tiny and I'm not sure that I'm reading all of that?
Yes, ma'am. So, the bottom here is the 25-foot riparian buffer and let me back up to the typical lots. The lots backing up to the park will have an additional 10-foot landscape easement on the back, which is where Mr. Allen was talking about also planting buffer plants as well. So, part of that 35-foot is on the back of the lots backing up to the park.
I'll add to that too, that we'll put language in the CCNRs from the HOA standpoint, that the HOA will be responsible for maintaining and having upkeep on all that landscaping and all those buffer areas. What we don't want to have happen is leave that up to 15 or 20 individual lot owners after they're closed later on because you're gonna, that's not going to work. So, by keeping it in the HOA and controlling it there, there'll even be provisions, let's say unfortunately, let's just say a homeowner back there five years down the line didn't fully read the rules and everything that they're required on that and they decided that they were going to go in there and cut down a few of those trees because they wanted to do something else. We'll actually put penalty provisions in there that empower the HOA to step in and say, no, that has to be restored and get all that taken care of and maintain that back to what it's supposed to be. So, we can create that from the beginning to make sure that that is always preserved and managed appropriately, if that makes sense.
And I'm assuming also that at those mailbox kiosks and where the grills are, that the HOA will also be responsible for picking up all litter and trash and maintaining that so it will not blow into the park. Okay. Commissioners, any questions?
Mayor, I've got just a couple of comments, questions. So, can we go back to where the lot sizes, the 10,000-foot and so forth? So, we see a large number of 10,000-foot lots and we talked about garages and the homes that I saw there with the side garages and so forth, is it safe to say the 10,000-foot lot that we're going to have front facing garages?
If I'm not mistaken, the 10,000... The 10,000 square foot lots are usually 80-foot wide and so if you take the seven-and-a-half feet on one side and the 24-foot that we need for a side entry, that leaves you about 47 feet. And so, if you study some of our garages, the garages are offset a little bit sometime in the front so that we can make them 50-foot wide on houses. And so, if you take a 50-foot by roughly another 50-foot depth house, you can see we've got plenty of room to get side entry. So, if you look at, anytime we get these size lots, we usually always go side entry and we do everything because we know the customers prefer side entry. And in some cases, we might have a side entry garage, but it'd be two cars and right behind the two cars, there is one that looks forward, but that's usually set a minimum of 20 to 25 feet past the front of the house itself. And so, we do everything we can. And then the other thing we do is do the courtyard. So, basically, we would commit to you and this neighborhood right here, we don't know of any situation where we would have to do a directly front-end garage. If we do anything at all, it would be the courtyard entry and if you follow me on a courtyard entry, and that would be the case.
Okay. So... I believe this is the courtyard entry you're talking about?
Correct. Right. And again, that house is in Otter Creek. We use, by the way, hardy siding, which is a cement siding product, and brick and as well as stone. So, a lot of times we use a natural fill... We use, by the way, hardy siding, which is a cement siding product, and brick, and, and as well as stone. So, a lot of times we use a natural fill stone, but we also use some mad made stone.
Okay. And then, so, we talked about 172 homes if we did R20 pud. Is that correct?
Yes.
178 homes.
178 homes, okay.
79, I'm sorry, when we removed the two.
Okay. Have we calculated if we decided to go with R20, how many homes would that cut out of the project?
Mathematically or physically? I've not physically done an R20 layout.
Okay.
The mathematical density would allow roughly the same, because the R20 would be a little shy of two units per acre, and the R20 pud is 2.2 units per acre. And we're, we are currently at, I have to find my math down here, we're currently at 1.6 units per acre.
I do like what we talked about with the bordering, and I'm sure many people here have walked the perimeter trail at Bowie Park, and it would be great if all of the, the neighbors that bordered the Bowie Park perimeter trail, you know, kept that in mind, kept in mind that there are people walking the perimeter trail, they're trying to get out there and enjoy nature, and that is a significant concern for many of our citizens. They are there to enjoy nature, and then boom, you hit a subdivision in the perimeter trail. So, mitigating that is certainly very, very important, making it as natural or hiding the subdivision as much as possible. So, I appreciate you bringing that up and talking how we can mitigate that with, with both parties being able to still enjoy the nature park and then the, the people with the homes bordering. You know, lot sizes, I, I think are gonna be something that we're gonna have to talk about, and I'm sure as we progress through this, it's gonna be an issue. We are transitioning from one neighborhood that has R20, half-acre lots, to R20 pud. Many of us have lived in the city where we started out in one subdivision, and then the second phase or another subdivision comes, and there are much smaller lots. We are all concerned as citizens about losing property value. That's at the forefront, and this, this does seem to be a transition to that. So, these are some things that we're gonna have to overcome, that we're gonna have to discuss, property value, transitioning from bigger lots to smaller lots, and, and how we're gonna, how we're gonna feel about that, and how we're going to, to overcome that with those discussions.
I'd like to add that, you know, we do a lot of market studies, and basically, we see these homes starting in the very high 400s and going into the 600s. And believe it or not, in Williamson County, that is a hard item to find. At one time in Williamson County, no one wanted more than a 30-minute commute. Today, the commute is a 45-minute commute that is acceptable. And so, again, we build throughout Williamson County, all the way down into Murray County, and, and Fairview is one of the places that we'll be able to do that. And of course, the size of a lot really does make a difference in that. Very seldom do we ever come into a neighborhood that we don't bring value by bringing the price per square foot of a home up. And so, I think that if, again, if you looked at Otter Creek homes that we did, you would see we hit those exact price points. We were in the very high two, I believe one or two of them might hit right at 600,000. And so, we think that we will bring a lot of value to the neighborhood. We do a lot of design work to hit the trends that are going up, the modern farmhouse design, which is, again, our model over at Otter Creek. You'll see, we sell that same house in Rutherford County for right at 600,000. And so, it's, so I see, you know, but it's a five-bedroom. It has an option to have a five-bedroom versus a four-bedroom. But we do understand your concerns, and I think that the biggest thing is how do you position that on a lot to make sure that you have good separation between the houses and you have a good mix of houses, so it doesn't look like a production neighborhood, that it looks like a, homes that were built over time, customized for neighbors.
Thank you. The last question or comment that I would like to discuss is, is water runoff. You know, this is a, a huge concern for everybody that enjoys Bowie Park. These are concept drawings. Could you speak just a little bit on a concept drawing? How is that set? Do we already, do we have engineers already looking at that and planning how the runoff is going to affect, where we're gonna take that runoff? Speak a little bit about the concept drawing and the progression, if it does get approved and so forth.
Oh, I can take it. Yes. At Reagan Smith, we have a full team of engineers that have been engaged with this project since it started. With the, with the submittal we initially made to staff, we submitted preliminary, preliminary grading plans. So, our engineers have already studied the size of these basins, the locations of these basins, and done preliminary grading to make sure that they work and that they will function as they're supposed to. So, as the site falls, we have a detention basin here which will catch water, here, 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 and here. And the water will be caught, detained, and filtered before it leaves, and then it will be leaving and following the natural flow of the land through the existing drainage ways that are already located on the site. So, these basins would be releasing and, and releasing their water into the existing drainage way that exists. We will not be allowed to release any more water or create any faster runoff that is currently happening on the site. And in most cases, when we come through with a development, we will be improving the situations because we will be slowing the water down and releasing it slower into the drainage ways.
I think the, the other thing that I would add to that is, you know, we are at a very, you know, this is very early in the process, so it's, it's largely conceptual in nature. We have done enough work, like, like Jay said, to generally know how much volume we need and to make sure that all of that can fit, and that's been accounted for in the One of the things I think is gonna be real important, but it's a bit early at this stage in the game, it's something later on, you know, if the project were allowed to advance forward, when we start getting into really, you know, site plan and construction documents and things like that, it's not just the, what's the final picture when it's all done, where all those ponds are at, you know, what's the final drainage plan? There's going to be a, a process that we go through and design on that, where we'll have to develop some initial erosion control plans, and then we'll have to develop several different pieces of while this is under construction and as we build each piece. So, it, I don't want you to think that just because we've taken into account at a conceptual level that we can handle the runoff and, and the initial drainage things and everything are generally sized, there will be a whole other level of engineering analysis that we'll coordinate with staff on to really step through, really what I call is really stepping through the how you're actually gonna build it, because it's one thing to say we factored all that in, and at the end of all of it, everything's gonna be okay. But you also have to say, you know what, from the beginning and all the way through, we're protecting this thing the whole way, and you gotta be able to back that up and show it. And so, that's where, when you really get into the details, you know, an initial erosion control plan for a first phase might identify some of those key areas and really set up several barriers of protection as we step up away from the park to make sure that nothing's getting down that way and we're capturing everything as we go towards it. But as we're grading and building and doing different things, that's gonna have to modify as you go. And so, you start to see things like, okay, well, now we're doing something over here. We may put a temporary diversion ditch in to capture some runoff and make sure any sediment is intercepted. So, if it's coming down a hill towards the park, we intercept it with a diversion swale, and then we put it in a sediment trap, so we're capturing all that runoff and all that sediment before it even gets, you know, within 50 feet of the park. There's, there's a whole exercise, and there would be a whole series of sheets in a construction set dedicated just to that, but that's, that's a little bit further on down the line. But generally, that's how we would approach it and step through it. Obviously, we would coordinate it with staff and make sure we're meeting not only all the local standards, but also the state standards. And honestly, in this case, it's probably gonna take a little bit more than that to really do it right, so.
I appreciate that. I, I think many, many people are extremely sensitive to that, to that and many other things, but runoff i- is a significant concern for many in Bowie Park. Some of the developments around Fairview, we're talking about people's homes because of runoff, because it wasn't done right, that are underwater during a rainstorm. This absolutely has to be done right, and those, those questions that will be asked, please heed, please listen to those, and we'll try to get some answers for those, because that's gonna be a significant concern. Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. And just let me remind everyone that when the commissioners are finished, then we will open it up for questions from the, from the public.
Hi, I'm Lisa Anderson. I've never lived in a subdivision with an HOA. Could you explain how the fees are set for HOAs?
We have numerous communities that we've developed with HOAs, and believe it or not, we actually have communities where no one cuts their own grass. The HOA cuts it all and manages that. And so, we actually have an attorney prepare a very detailed document, and that document usually outlines what the, the HOA is responsible for. So, to give you an idea, all the detention ponds and all the water quality devices that are in there, the mailboxes and stuff, they have to be maintained by the HOA. The HOA actually contracts with an independent company to come in and manage that. And so, those fees run from anywhere, if I say today, in an average subdivision, from $35 to $75 a house per month. And that association actually collects all the money. There's a lien placed on the property that where the homeowner has to pay it. If he doesn't pay it, then he is in default in the dues, and they can take action against the homeowner. But in all the neighborhoods that we usually develop and build in, there is an HOA, and then, and it can actually contract with a waste disposal company to come pick up everybody's waste, as well as recycle companies to pick up and recycle. I doubt if this neighborhood would be one that the yards would be maintained by the HOA, because the yards will be larger. Normally, they're small or large lots like that. Typically, where we target 55-plus buyers, the yards are maintained by the association. Or if we do townhomes and single families combined, we usually have an HOA maintain the grounds. So, it's a, it's a very simple mechanism. It is established by the state legislature that allows us to create the HOA and put the deed restrictions down. So, when the plat is recorded, a set of documents, deeds, covenants, and restrictions are recorded at the very same time. And, and then we have an independent management company manage that in subdivision, and anything that goes on with it. The, the association actually amongst the members elects a board of usually five members. They usually elect a president of the board, and they oversee that in a back and forth with the management company. So, they actually, neighbors that live in that neighborhood actually oversee the management, but it's an independent management company overseeing the running of the association.
This development greatly benefits from, if passed, using the name of Bowie Park, having an entrance to Bowie Park, people in that community, in that development, being able to access Bowie Park. So, is it a possibility to, as part of the HOA fee, have part of that money go into the park fund to, for maintenance?
I would have to have an attorney ask that que, answer that question. To have an annual contribution from the association to maintain some stuff in the park, I think, could be possible, because usually if there are stormwater facilities that, that are in, adjacent to one association to another association sometimes, or for whatever reason they use that, they could do an annual contribution. I do think it's possible, but an attorney would have to look at that and make sure that whatever we're setting up is legal and impermissible.
I would just think that would be something we, you know, that would wanna look at, so thank you.
Could you, could you help me a little bit on that? And this may be something for staff, too. Would that contribution, is there, I'm not 100% how y'all structure your budget, is there a separate enterprise fund just for Bowie Park, or would it just be a contribution to the general fund that would get allocated to Bowie Park? Is it?
The process for that would be, if it were to pass and all requirements were met legally and otherwise, the setup for that would be the utilization of the city's current park fund. We have a park fund that's outside in the budget, it has its separate line items, separate general ledger, and separate checking account. So, what we would do as a part of that and the annual budgeting that takes place, we would remit those funds to the Bowie Park Fund that the city manages. Those funds will be dedicated to the park and expended only in the park for the matters that were subject to whatever agreement. I would also suggest that if that agreement were to take place, the city adopt an ordinance to ensure future use of that, so there is no change. Budgets change year to year, but the actual use for ceded funds for that specific purpose should be dedicated by ordinance, so there's no revision or change of those dollars going forward.
Yeah, that was gonna be a concern. If we set something like that, we wanna make sure that it's always set aside and carried through. Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor? I just, I wanna echo Mr. Doss's concerns about the lot size. I just have a hard time wrapping my head on going through Cox Run, traditional R20 to get to this backside of a, of a smaller subdivision, just how we can maintain the integrity of the existing areas around it. There's one lot that is a cul-de-sac lot in Cox Run, they'll end up having four or five homes backing up to that individual parcel, just based off of the narrower lot sizes. It, it is positive to hear that possibly it wouldn't be any garage fronts, because the 20-foot really does worry me. We, we've had a 20-foot before where it's encroaching all over the sidewalks and the walking paths. And you guys mentioned, Mr. McGowan, you mentioned Otter Creek, and you kinda set the bar on that one, because that's a traditional R20, 20,000 square foot lots, and when you pull in, the landscape is gorgeous, it, the spacing of the houses, the setbacks, it just feels, it feels a little more of what in my, in my opinion would be a better fit for outside around our park, and so. And one of the other questions is, so we've had, we had the traffic study, the, as Cox Run, the main entrance to Cox Run been, you know, any kind of study made on that, as far as that's gonna bear the brunt of the, of the traffic, the majority of the traffic for the duration of the construction, construction traffic, heavy equipment? You know, has, has that road been reviewed or assessed for as far as the impact it's gonna have on it?
Yes. We did a traffic study with, along Cox Pike. We analyzed seven intersections, and in addition, we also analyzed the access, two access points that are currently there. When we analyze Cox Run Pike at Cox Run, the level of service, sorry. It was deemed acceptable at level of service B. And so, the city standard, just for everyone's understanding, is level of service D, so it starts at A and goes to B, C, and D. D is what the city has accepted as their minimum standard, but it has been analyzed, yes.
And one, one random thought I had today is now that you're introducing all these, this new traffic onto Cox Run, I don't know if it's a possibility, if the right of way there is to extend a sidewalk on one side of maybe of Cox Run to where they have the walkability to where, right now, those residents are walking in the street in order to get out, you know, check their mail and things, and so, is it possible to try and include a walkway that would connect and just give connectivity through there?
Are you, are you talking about?
Cox Run Lane or the main entrance, Cox Run Drive? So, that's where your main entrance will be until the final two phases where that you eventually build off of Wayne's Lane?
I, I'm trying to understand kinda where exactly... I'm trying to understand kind of where exactly the sidewalk is that you're talking about trying to add. I'm sorry, I'm just a little confused.
Just kind of brainstorming, to where now you're going to introduce all this new traffic onto, it's the main entrance of Cox Run Drive. So when you come into Cox Run, you drive up to the field up on top of the hill, it's that road. If maybe the right side has enough right-of-way, possibly you could put a sidewalk or so in there that would connect to this, to the future expansion.
How long do you think that drive would?
I'm not sure. Just trying to find resolution for...
We'll take a look at it. Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
Mr. Lucas, any questions?
No question. I think they've answered most of the questions or concerns that I would have had. I do want to thank you guys for the work that you put into this. I know that you've talked to city staff, you've talked to members of the community. And so, I know we're not all going to agree on the perfect solution to this thing, but I do appreciate the hard work that you guys have put in and working towards compromises to make this a great neighborhood for our community. And so, I do appreciate that. Thank you for the citizens coming out tonight and voicing your questions and concerns here shortly. But thank you, guys, for your work on this.
Okay. So now we'll open it to the public for any questions you may have. If you will light up, maintain your distance, come to the podium, make sure your mask are on correctly, and state your name and your address.
I'm Gloria E. Barb. I live at 7320 Shayla Court. And Mr. Butler was speaking about my property. My home is going to be backed up to four of these houses, not just one or two, but four homes are going to be in my backyard. Right now, from me to the back of the wall is about my perimeter to that line, that property line, from my backyard to my, from my house. So, I am concerned about the noise and the amount of homes and the privacy. And I don't know if that fence you're talking about is going to be all around the whole subdivision and connect to Cox Run or just Bowie Park. I don't know. But there's going to be houses that's going to have drainage coming down, because that property, those houses are up here, my house is down here. So all that water is going to come down this and go straight down to the bottom of our subdivision, which it already has an issue. So that is a real big concern for all of us here. So, that is my concerns.
I'd like to comment on that. Typically, we try to grade the lot till it drains back to the street. Typically, we grade the lot to where it drains back to the street and capture the water. We're usually required to do that. Tennessee is a friendly water state, they call it, which means that whatever the natural course it can go. But typically, this type of subdivision, we try to grade the lot till the lot drains back to the street to collect the water, that again, go back into the detention ponds and the water quality ponds. In regards to the backyards, too, again, that's why we brought up the six-foot fence. You know, we could actually take some photos of a neighborhood we call Sherwood Green, Sherwood Green, where we put the six-foot fences in certain areas to create privacy between the two different neighborhoods. That neighborhood was done at 1.8 units per acre. And again, we can, you do a drone video for you, or we could actually do still shots and show you what we did with fences at the request of neighbors, so that you would have privacy between the two homes.
Is that green section that's on that first row behind Cox Run subdivision, kind of straight back from that middle driveway, that first phase? No, come down. Keep on coming down into this first phase over here, that green section right there. Yes, what is that?
That's the open space strip in between the homes.
Okay, okay.
And typically, you do those so that the association can go back and maintain any common area. And that buffer area would be maintained, yes.
How you doing? Justin Luke, 7124 Wayne's Lane. There's three of us that actually own pretty much the cul-de-sac there. The road is literally a one-lane road. We have a fire department, we have any person, single vehicle. Vehicle passing is into somebody's yard. We don't have access point for an entrance like that. Two, like the gentleman said, he investigated the whole property. Well, there's a creek there. We, I pointed that out to you, said he's going to probably put in a bridge there. There's a lot of things that aren't being discussed that we talked about. So if we could elaborate a little bit on that in the future.
Y'all been commissioners now for about, what, a month now? How's that feel? Hopefully, that's pretty good for you. Dan, thank you.
You'll give us your name and your address?
Terry Benefield, 7122 Wayne's Lane. And I'll be back quite often. I do appreciate you coming out there and listening, and by the difference in the drawings, it's obvious to me that you did listen to what I said.
Sir, if you'll use your mic, so we can all hear you.
Yes, ma'am. It's obvious to me that you listened. I can tell by the drawings that you listened, all right? I've got a couple, two or three things I'd like for you to check off, but I'm also wondering if my city of Fairview is actually going to take care of that road out there on Wayne's Lane. I somehow doubt it, but we'll see. The things I wanted you to discuss would be, one, the sewage system, because none of us want to wake up every morning smelling other people's sewage. And I know that's supposed to be a drip sewage. I'm not real sure how that works, but, and I know there's another one across the road over in another subdivision that they had put in. So I'm not real sure how that works. I just know I don't want to wake up smelling poop every morning. And then, other than that, I mean, just the impact on the wildlife itself. I mean, has anybody done anything to look at the impact? And I'm not talking about inside the park, I'm talking outside the park. Has anybody done anything to look at the impact on that? It's like I said, we got there to come out there and play in our yards. Those are pets to us, you know? And you're talking about putting all these places in there. I'm reminded a commissioner, a commissioner on this very council, on this very council, said that they were going to put a place in on some land next to his, he just sold his land. I don't want no part of it, all right? We don't all have that option, all right? What we got is here, this. I'd also like to say thank you to all the citizens that are here now. Undoubtedly, we got the word out that we were going to have a meeting on this thing. Because the first time we did it, it was two of us. So, thank you.
I'll go ahead and respond here real quick on that, if everybody's okay, and then we'll take the next one, if that's all right. So, this neighborhood would be served, as far as sewer goes, it would be served by what's called a step system. The area in the, Jay will point to it, the area, it's roughly about 16 acres on the plan is set aside. That's the area of the property that has the kind of soils that you typically need to put in that particular kind of system. And so, the rest of the roads in the neighborhood and the connections to the houses, inside the house, normal plumbing and systems and everything that, restrooms, bathtub showers, washing machines, all that stuff works just like it normally would. And a home in a neighborhood that has what's called a gravity, just your typical gravity sewer system. The piping, once it, you know, you flush the toilet, and once it gets out of the house, it's then piped to the step system area. There is a design series of standards as far as bringing that stuff in, treating it, getting it taken care of, and then pumping it out further along down the line to connect into some other parts of the system. We've had some conversations with Dixon. Most of the treatment is contained, and it'll be within that area there. The standards that they have from a technical standpoint, things like that, there are controls and parts of that to, you know, minimize things like odors and smells and things like that, that can be considered nuisances. And generally, it'll primarily be contained right up in that area. So, kind of a high-level, simpler way to understand it, think of it almost like a, like a conventional septic system, like if your house was on a septic system, with some better technology to control all those things and manage it a little bit better, because it's being done on a neighborhood scale as opposed to just for one house. I hope that helps kind of clarify that. And then, as far as impact on wildlife, we haven't really done any kind of studies or anything like that, like you were asking about. We did have, we've had a number of discussions. I don't know if you recall, there was a discussion at the planning commission meeting where we had several commissioners asking about, you know, streetlights and lighting, and what can we do about that? You know, we don't want to affect the wildlife at night. They're used to it being primarily dark out there. And so, we had some discussions about putting some things in, like some shields on the lights and things like that. So we could still have streetlights out there from a safety standpoint, but we can put some shields on them to limit them not only, you know, sending light straight up, but also straight back towards the park. We can keep it directed back away and primarily in the neighborhood and done like that. So there's some things like that that we can do. As far as the rest of it...
I wanted to be clear also, I mean, yes, we're worried about the wildlife. But I'm assuming that you want, like you said, you want families to come in here. Families have children. We, I know we have coyotes and foxes and all that stuff out there. I'm worried about the wildlife, but I'm also worried about the safety of the children in that neighborhood. I mean, because you're going to have, I'm assuming, a bunch of children, and, I mean, you've got all kinds of varmints, if you will, running around. I mean, these are things you got to think about, because I assure you, you're going to run across it. And I hope the commission, the commission is thinking about that as well, so.
Is there anyone else that has questions for the developers?
One other comment about the step system that I failed to mention. It will be professionally managed by a utility entity that's licensed in the state of Tennessee. So, we're not necessarily just like turn that over to the HOA or something like that. It's heavily regulated, and it's basically viewed just like any other utility provider. So, it'll be held to the same standard as everybody else's.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Oh, testing this thing out. My name is Justin Miller, and I'm on 7415 Master Shane Road, which is in the existing Cox Run neighborhood. Earlier this year, my wife and I, we've got two children, we had a flood. It rained really heavily one night, and I woke up at 5:00 AM. And over $40,000 worth of damage was done to the lower part of my house. And I live literally just at the bottom of all those hills. And when I looked out my window, I saw, I could not see any grass in my yard. And there was water coming, pouring over the street. Several neighbors around me also have flooding problems already. Now, I'm not in a flood plain, and I've been told, and when they built the development, zoning and things were not done properly in the first place. And so, I didn't have flood insurance, and I'm out over $40,000 of baseball card collectibles, musical equipment, and finished living space, including the garage. We don't even park our cars in the garage anymore. So, my first question is, on this map right here, where is the Cox Run neighborhood?
Up under all this.
Fair enough. The property as it sits right now, as far as water drainage, compared to when this is done, are you guys, is there going to be a net zero result in water drainage? Because if not, I'm going to get flooded again. I'm already going to get flooded again, but...
Not 100% sure what you mean by the term net zero, just because I'm a s-
In other words, the existing field there now, the amount of water that comes down is already too much. So, let's just say, and I'm not a scientist, but let's just say you had 100,000 gallons of water that come down that hill, if it rains heavily, okay? After this is built, how much of that 100, is there going to be plus on top of that 100,000? Or is there going to be less once this is built?
If you see those big green areas, we basically end up building what's called a detention pond.
Right.
So we're required to catch that water and release it at a rate similar to the rate it was released before. So...
I'll kind of repeat it here, so you can hear it. So, there, there's a couple things. From a regulatory standpoint, and this might be where Mr. Collins or some of the other staff may want to chime in as well, there are, there's local regulations here in Fairview, as well as significant state regulations in the state of Tennessee, that at a very high level conceptually, we are not allowed to add more runoff or make that situation any worse than it already is. Now, there are a variety of what we call best management practices, or design strategies and techniques, and different things that can be done in the further design of that site, as we really, you know, if it's allowed to go forward, and we really get in the details, to start working through those things and figure it out. And that's where Mr. McGowan was kind of referencing, you know, there are areas on the property that are set aside as detention ponds. Think of those almost as a natural version, kind of like of a holding tank, right? So, we can't, we would intercept some of that water and direct it to those ponds. And then those ponds actually have a mechanical structure in them, so that allows them to fill up and store that water, and then slowly release it at a slower rate over time, so that you don't have a big code-strangler, gully washer type situation where it's just firing out, right? So, we gather, we collect, we intercept, we fill, and that's where the detention in detention pond comes from, because they're letting it fill up, and we're detaining that water there and slowly releasing it over time to minimize those impacts around it. Does that, does that make sense?
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you. And then I guess my next question would be to y'all. We have had flooding issues before I moved to Cox Run that did ruin people's belongings at their houses, and we are continuing to have flooding issues. The waterways in our neighborhood are egregiously underdeveloped. So, I guess the bigger concern here is, is we already have flooding issues down there. And I think I can speak for our neighborhood, that we would like a little attention. Because as I understand it, this neighborhood was built 1999. And I don't want it to happen to my family anymore. We already can't use part of our house as it was intended. And the families before us experienced it, too. I just don't want it to happen to anyone else. But thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you.
My name's Eileen Brogan. I live at 7106 Brush Creek Road South, and I do not live adjacent to this development or even in the city limits. But I'm president of Friends of Bowie Nature Park, and that is my chief concern. We, our board of directors gave a statement of concern to all the commissioners and then commissioner candidates, because this was back before the election even. And I'd like to present that to you all now.
So much.
Back then, when we wrote this, our biggest concern was those 13 houses that are along the, and visible, will be visible from the perimeter trail. Since then, I've learned a lot more about drainage, and I've looked at the plans and everything. And that's an even bigger concern, because there are several places that are currently underwater when there's a, a storm... underwater when there's a storm and there's problems now. And if that increases, if the runoff from that property increases, there's no way that that can be sustained in the park. I mean, it's going to, it's just going to wash away the trail. And, and on that note, I was looking at the zoning ordinance for the city of Fairview and Article 13, which is the environmental and operational performance standards. And there's Table 13-102A, minimum residential lot size for site slope. I don't know what the scale is of the topo map that I have, so I can't really tell what the slopes are. But if it's greater than 20%, then the minimum lot size is five acres. And if it's 15 to 20%, the minimum lot size is three acres. And I have another question before I sit down and would like, you know, for y'all, I'm sure you've seen this, but I'd like to see, to hear what you have to say and how you reconcile that with the plan. There's another table in the same Article 13, Table 13-104B, minimum lot area without public water and/or sewer. So, I'm understanding this is not going to be connected to a public sewer. Is that true, correct? Okay. So, it says without public water or sewer, minimum lot area is 40,000 square feet. And I'm seeing a lot of 10,000 square foot lots. So, if you could please address that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
The neighborhood will be connected to a public sewer system. The step system will be, the step system will be owned and maintained by a utility company. So, that would be a.
Okay. We, we need to let them address the questions, and if you have questions or concerns, please come to the podium.
Well, I'm, I can certainly provide, you know, at the next middle and make it available for everybody to look at. I can provide a copy of the availability letter that I got from Dixon Water Authority that addresses both water service to the neighborhood as proposed as well as the requirement to build a step system for the sewer. And then, once that system is built and completed, they would inspect it to make sure it's built to their standards. And then, they would take ownership of it. We would actually dedicate that over to them and they would take a ownership of it and operate it from that point forward. So, that's where, that's where my colleague, that's what he meant when he said what he just said, so.
You might explain to them the process of you build that field, of you build the system, just like you would any other neighborhood before you build the houses. And so, usually that system is in place before the houses go in. And so, that big field, again, is designed to where water goes out in it, it gets evaporated overnight. And so, a lot of people don't realize, the step system is a septic tank with electric pump. The electric pump is designed both to aerate it and also to provide the pressure to push the water through to go out into the field. So, you know, very, very few solids of any kind ever go out into that field. And so, that water is treated in that septic tank and then it is treated again at the point that it comes into the plant before it goes into the fields.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Your name and your address.
My name is Joseph McCormick. I live at 7317 Shayla Court. My question is, did you develop a zoning for what the zone, what it's zoned for right now? Did you develop a plan for that area for what it's zoned for now? Because it's not developed for what you're planning here. It's not zoned for what you have up here. My question is, did you spend the same amount of money on that development as you did this one? Sorry.
No, sir. When we first started looking at it and came and met with staff, in order to kind of create the kind of neighborhood that we were thinking was a good fit, we talked with them about the comprehensive plan. We talked about what it said. We looked at what it said. We asked them a lot of questions about what that meant. And based on that conversation, that's what led us down the road to look at doing an RS20 pod type scenario, and then we developed the plan from there. So, if you're asking me, did we initially look at it just doing RS40 based on that zoning that's already there? No, sir, we did not.
Well, I mean, it's just, you invested a lot of money on something that you don't, didn't know whether it's going to be approved or not. So, that kind of bothers me as far as that amount of money being spent. Obviously, you know, it just doesn't seem right to me. But the Cox Run Road, everybody in the Cox Run subdivision walks animals every night, every day. And the main thoroughfare in the Cox Run is where we walk our animals. In all three of those subdivisions, people will just make loops constantly. And with the amount of traffic you're suggesting with this subdivision through our neighborhood, we would no longer be able to walk our animals. We wouldn't, people won't be able to socialize because of the amount of traffic coming in and out constantly. That's my main concern. It's a, I just, I've been in this neighborhood for 10 years now. I lived there, rented a house for nine years. A house opened up there. I love the neighborhood so much, I bought a house there. I've got four houses that you're planning on building right in my backyard. And so, how can you tell me my property value is not going to diminish from what it is now? Because nobody wants to see that amount of houses in their backyard. Actually, I'm going to see eight houses, not four houses. So, you know, I don't know why you can't develop a, something, what it is zoned for now. That's, to me, is what Fairview needs to be. Fairview doesn't need to be houses right on top of each other. I'm sorry. I've lived here for 45 years. My father owned McCormick Grove. We raised cattle in McCormick Grove. The houses in McCormick Grove is a great subdivision. I don't know why we can't keep the integrity of Fairview in that nature. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Make sure you can hear me. My name is Tiffany Wilson Mobley. I live at 7303 Cox Run Court. We, I will just make sure I cover everything that we can and also allow everyone else time. First off, I want to make sure that you can hear what we have to say. We appreciate you coming here. We really want this to be a harmonious, you know, process. But there's a lot that we need to know, and it should be transparent. We need to be able to know what's happening. We hear a lot of great things, but we need to be able to see the reports. We need to see how these things are being developed. For me, a logical step is when I, we learned about this subdivision going in next to us, then we saw a plan. So, we looked at the plan, which was proposed, and tried to see, okay, how would this, how does this look? Because we're going to have a conversation about it. Our commissioners are obviously concerned about taking care of us and the park and Wayne's Lane and all of the adjacent properties. So, we look at the plan. The plan now, we understand, is not necessarily the plan. So, you will have to look, realize that as you read through the statement that we've provided from the concerned residents of Cox Run subdivision. We have several neighbors that have come together. Several neighbors are still talking to us about this. And you mentioned that you talked to some folks on Wayne's Lane. We appreciate that. You used words like listening and, and that means so much. But we need you to also listen to our, our concerns. So, again, you will see a lot of those listed. I will not be able to go all, into all of those tonight. Again, that would not be fair to my other citizens. I believe.
I think this is a copy of this thing?
We are very hopeful. We realize we're a part of this process, so we're very hopeful that we're going to have all of our questions answered. I just want to make sure that that's a commitment also from you and the commissioners. Just, is that, is that how this happens? I'm assuming we would get all of our concerns, our questions answered as we go forward?
I will absolutely read through all of this.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. We appreciate that.
I'll also commit to, just so everybody can hear me and look at everybody's, just like Mr. Terry, and he can attest to it, anyone who wants to meet with me or if you want me to come to your house, if you want me to look at these things and do, please reach out. I've got a few cards with me. I'm sure we can get that circulated.
We will definitely reach out and make that happen.
I will come meet with anybody who wants to meet.
Thank you. Okay. Just to a few things I want to ask about. So, on this map, we see that the entrance is through Wayne's Lane. Does that mean there is no longer an entrance through Cox Run?
No, there's still a road connection to Cox Run Drive right here.
Okay, okay. That's still a big concern then. Okay. Let me just get into a couple of things here. You will see on that statement that we have, all of our categories fall into about seven different, seven, seven categories. The first one is drainage and runoff, which we've heard about. We realize that there's a law that says you cannot add any more runoff to a subdivision. So, again, we're going to have to see some, some promise of that in form of a report and see how that's going to be handled. Again, we are citizens. When we looked at this design, we're trying to figure it out ourselves. So, we did get advice from a civil engineer who's here with us tonight. Ray, do you want to come up? Okay. So, we're really, really grateful that we had his advice because from the design, there were several problems that, that were shown to us. And that was the slopes that go to Bowie Nature Park and come toward us are severe. And they are, they do fall into what Ms. Brogan talked about as far as the percentage. So, right there, it shows to me, and I, it just seems to make logical sense, that we should not be changing the zoning from low to medium because the slope is not, it doesn't allow for that. Also, looking at the original design, it wasn't clear where the, all of the swales were and the detention basins and all of that. So, for example, I am right next to that nice big acre detention basin as several of our neighbors here. And the way it looked on the proposed design was that that detention basin would have to be about 20 feet high to contain the water, which means there would be behind us a 20, a detention basin that was 20 feet high behind my home. Again, we are basing this on what we were given. So, that's a big, big, big concern. What if something happens? Who's going to maintain it? We have neighbors next to us, our, our, our lot, the neighbors next to us, they are constantly battling erosion. It's encroaching upon their home. They have an intermittent stream. The list goes on and on. So, it is a very big concern. We need to see exactly how this runoff is not going to come to us. I won't go further on that. I know we're going to discuss that more. Considering the zoning, this is our first conversation, the current proposal was 181. It sounds like it's now gone down to 179, which doesn't make too much of a difference. That means 181 homes, that's about two homes per home, two cars per home plus visitors, et cetera. We're looking at about 400 cars now on the road coming through our subdivision in Wayne's Lane. That's serious. That's serious. We're taking these areas that have been refuges where we can take our families out, we can walk around. We don't have sidewalks. You can't put a sidewalk in because of the sidewalk space. That's not possible. So, that is going to become a thoroughfare, very dangerous for our families. We have families with wheelchair, family members in wheelchairs. We have elderly. We have, I mean, it's just going to change that completely. We, we just are begging the city not to allow that. The 179 homes amplifies that concern. If we go down to low density, we'd love to know what that would mean.
Let me, let me just, we have about five more minutes.
Okay. I'm so sorry. Some main points I wanted to go back to are questions like section 404 permit, has that been done? That's a federal reg, that's a federal law. We must, we must abide by, that makes sure that we're not polluting. The trees that are going around, that sounds lovely, but we have to make sure that those are going to be comparable to the trees that are there. There's not a competition. There are some serious things could happen, right? So, again, we need a tree expert. I guess, I'm not sure what they're called. The buffer, 25 feet, that's about what a football team has to go to make a first down. It's not much at all. And it looks like that's less than the lot sizes that you're providing to these new homes. 25 feet is teeny, and it's compared to the rest of the country, that's a small buffer. We don't have, it doesn't have to be 25 feet. We're wondering, we don't want to just come with problems. We want to come with solutions too and ideas. We're wondering why this has to all be situated up on a hill with all of the drainage that's going to cause us. Why does it have to be so close to us in the park? You have considered putting in a buffer for Wayne's Lane, and that's fantastic. We would like the same for our subdivision in the park, much larger than 25 feet, for all of these reasons and more you can read. Also, why is it all up on the hill? Why can't it come down to that flatter area? And as far as the sewage is concerned, I think the well Dixon is going to operate it. I feel like there's some gray area there. That's a sewage system that's going in, so that means it's not put in by the public. It's not public water. So, as Ms. Brogan read, that right there should say that it's not, that it's low density. So, we really, really, really hope that the city will help protect our homes, our families, all that we've invested, our retirements, our children's college, I mean, everything. Consider this from the golden rule. You do unto others as you want done unto yourself. If this is going to, if this was your, our homes were your homes, your park, your homes on Wayne's Lane, if this is really going to negatively affect you, you don't do it. You wouldn't do it to yourself. You don't do it to your neighbor. So, the low density is what we're recommending, that it remains. And again, we haven't seen a plan for low density. We've only seen the plan for medium density. We're not quite sure how that got to be the plan that we're working on since the zoning was not, it's not the zoning for that. Okay. I will be quiet and please just let someone else talk so they can get their.
Would you like to, Mr. Collins, would you like to address that, that it is public water and public sewer, or do we need to do that now?
I'll try very briefly.
Three minutes, you got, you got, I know you can't do anything less than 20 minutes, but try for three.
Just to clarify the sewer system, the onsite sewer system is standard customary here in the area. They've been in construction operation now for about 20 years. It's, it's a pretty robust system. The discussion between public and private, as I understand, this sewer system or the onsite, the step system as it's called, will be installed on the site if the site is approved as has been presented. The ownership of that site ultimately will go to the Water Authority of Dixon County. The discussion about it being public or private, the answer to that is that it would be a public system, so to speak, because in 2006, via its agreement with the Water Authority of Dixon County, the city transitioned all of its water and sewer operations to the Water Authority of Dixon County. And these onsite sewer systems are constructed in such a way that if necessary or future growth and changes take place, that you can attach or include a private sewer system or a singular sewer system, so to speak, to the existing sewer system. So, the fact that this sewer system would only serve this neighborhood does not today or upon construction, does not mean it will forevermore be designed to maintain only the sewer system or that it cannot be connected to conventional sewer. An example of that most recently is the subdivision out on, just off of Highway 100, the Cavender subdivision, Otter Creek, where that subdivision was developed. I believe you are familiar with that. And the, that subdivision has an onsite sewer system or a step system, and it was constructed such that the first phase was to be served by the onsite sewer. Once the second phase was constructed, phase one then transitions to a conventional sewer system that runs along, on Ashville Road. So, I wouldn't want to consider the idea that the sewer system is in of itself private or not connectable because it is. It also offers some benefits that a conventional sewer system does not. I know there was some discussion about the smell or from time to time. Or from time to time, you drive to place to place and you'll sit, you'll observe a smell from a sewer system. That in fact is not the sewer system that you smell. More often than not, that is a sewer lift station or a pump station where there's a transfer from a low pressure line or a gravity flow line to a high pressure line. And because of that transfer, there's an opening or exhaust of that sewer system, and that's where the smell comes from. An enclosed system is in fact an enclosed, closed circuit system that's circular, and there's no exhaust or change from that. It stays onsite from the time the drain, from the time the water runs down the drain until it's treated. So, in that instance, you find the exact opposite. And that the smell does not have the ability to escape or to be observed. Simply because there's no transfer, it's all onsite and it doesn't leave. So, I wouldn't want to leave this room with the concern of that. I think the sewer system as presented is probably the safest discussion that could be had as far as the subdivision goes. So, I hope that I've answered that question. But that, the city's comfortable with that. Again, these are fairly common. I have no doubt that the sewer system is drawn would work for that. And I'd be glad to answer any questions regarding our agreement as it relates to the ownership, owner site, and usage of public sewer systems as it relates to City of Fairview.
I want to thank all of you for coming. This is great. I'll give you two minutes. Okay. Yes, sir, you can.
Johnny Johnson.
Use the microphone.
Johnny Johnson, 7121 Hall Road. And the sewer system you're talking about is all that green right there, right? It's going, a portion of it. And it's going to be like a septic tank, correct?
No, sir, not exactly.
It's going to be dumped, it's going to be pumped to Dixon?
No, sir.
Okay. What about the creeks right down through that? I've been here 62 years, okay? I've lived here at Fairview my whole life. That's my playing ground when I was a kid.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Cox Run, there was creeks down through there. They disappeared. Right now, behind my house, right over here in this dark green, I've got 10 acres. There's a bunch of creeks and springs down there. What is that going to do to that?
Nothing.
Nothing to it?
No, sir.
Yeah, there's a creek right where, right there on top of the sewer.
Correct, and I, and I know we're.
It's going to disappear like the rest.
Well, no, sir, I know we're short on time, but, and I don't have the FEMA flood map in front of me, but I can tell you from memory that that creek that you're talking about is in a FEMA floodway. It's a designated flood zone that actually goes across the property behind Wayne's Lane. And the flood zone that you're talking about, the creek on the FEMA map, actually terminates at the lower right corner of Cox Run subdivision, where I believe this gentleman lives on the corner. If I remember, if, I don't, I don't have all this record in front of me, but I believe a corner of your home, if I'm facing your house, the left front corner is in the actual flood zone, where the remainder of your home is not. And there's a, there's an outfall there where that water comes through. So, as I leave that outfall, all of that area that transverses across your property is actually in the flood zone, which can't be touched.
Right, right.
That flood zone area also presents or creates part of what we've seen for the flooding. I believe the gentleman mentioned that his basement or the lower part of his home had flooded. What happens there in that instance is there is a reverse flooding that takes effect. The water from the subdivision comes down, goes behind your home, sir. Goes under, and when the flooding backs up to the flood zone, it prevents water from going through that drain. So, in that instance, what you have is not water coming down the hill that causes your flooding. It's the water that backs up from the flood zone, stops there, causes a water overflow across the road, and that's where your issue is. So, you could open that up, that would simply put more water on your property.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
But, but to answer your question, there would be no sewer discharge at all on your property or your creek.
You understand that, but what happened, like Cox Run, what happened to that creek? It's gone.
The answer is we don't touch that creek.
I understand, it's not there no more. I know you're going to touch that one.
I try.
But there's going to be one of that green one right there, where all that sewer is, is a creek.
It will still remain, sir.
The field where we dispose of any water.
Please use your microphone, so everyone, I know, but just.
The field that is used, where this is, if you can go out and see these numerous counties, is actually fenced off, and no one is allowed to get in that particular field. And so, water doesn't leave from that site. It's either evaporated or absorbed into the soil. And so, no solids, again, go back to that particular deal like a normal septic tanks would do down a drain.
Right, but the sewer is not going to be pumped out, or correct? It's going to be like a septic tank?
Yeah, I realized, actually, as you were talking.
You know what I'm talking about, getting in the spring, stuff like that?
Yeah, I think I probably contributed to that. I made a misstatement earlier when I was talking about it. I mentioned something about pumping it up to Dixon. And that was wrong, I made a mistake, I'm sorry.
All right. I'll talk to you about it.
Thank you.
One more thing, because I realize that the sewer discussion is a little confusing. I'm wondering what the original intention, though, of the zoning regs were? Why in the world did we say before that we had public water and sewer? And that would require 40,000? And then suddenly, it would still be a matter of a water, of an independent water sewage place?
I think that's, I think that's a question that would have to go back to the Planning Commission for the subdivision regs.
Well, let me just also talk, since we don't have that all planned out, about the lot sizes. I just want to say one more thing. The lot sizes, the developers are going to make a lot of revenue on this. And we're great, we're happy that that's going to happen, it's going to help our city. But the revenue that you're making could also happen on larger lots. It doesn't have to be on small lots. The concerns that we have are amplified, like exponentially, by 179 lots behind us because of where it's situated, the top topography, where we are. Mr. Collins used to live in our neighborhood, actually. So, you know, it is the, it is the bottom part, but it's also the water that comes down. We've gotten them come from all places. So, this lot size situation is just going to amplify everything. We would really, really love to see a proposal, an actual design for the low density for which it's already zoned. And then, we could have a really good conversation and compare, and see how is it affecting medium density? How is it affecting low density? And you could also see if you would hit your revenue goals, and then the city could hit their revenue goals. That's all I say, I'm so sorry for one more comment. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you all for coming, thank you for participating. I'm hoping that this has answered a lot of your questions. And they have been very gracious to tell you to reach out to them if you have more. And of course, you all know that you can reach out to us at any time. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
We need a break. One and a half. Yes, yes, I will not start until.
Brandy, I'm Rick Olzansky. I just want to let you know I'm here.
If I could get, if I could have everyone's attention for just, if I could have everyone's attention for just one moment. We are, we, we have scheduled a, excuse me, one more. I'll, if I can. Um, we have a B O C meeting, or a Board of Commissioners meeting, scheduled to start in seven o'clock, which is just a couple of minutes ago. So if we could just have everybody, please stay, you're welcome to stay. Well, I know there'll be conversation after this. The Board of Commissioner meetings will likely take ten to fifteen minutes. We don't have a lot on the agenda tonight. But we'll run through that, and then I would welcome everyone just to hang around for a few minutes afterwards and express whatever questions or concerns you have. We just want to make sure we get that Board of Commissioners meeting underway and move forward. But please, please stay, make yourself at home, and we'll follow up just as quickly as we can. So thank you very much for that. It's ours.
Agenda and signs if you need to sign up. This is just agenda, there you go, and I'll get further.
Ms. Johnson, if you'll do the roll call, please.
Present. Commissioner Butler.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
Mayor Rainey.
Present.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. B O C meeting is now called to order. Mr. Lucas, would you lead us in our prayer and pledge, please?
Yes, if you'd please stand. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this evening. We thank you for the opportunity to come into this place once again to make decisions that are best for our city. God, help us to be open-minded, God, and make the decisions that are best for each individual here. Thank you for the freedoms that we have and the country and the community that we live in. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, approval of agenda and executive session announcements. We will remove the executive session from the agenda, which is item thirteen. Do I hear a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Motion to approve amended agenda.
First, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments, Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Gary Darnell, Mayor.
Mr. Darnell, if you will give us your name and your address.
My name's Gary Darnell. I reside at seventy-two oh eight Grammar Drive here in the City of Fairview. If I may, I'd like to follow up on the presentation that was made in December with regards to the View Community Resource Coalition. First, I would like to thank you, or those of you who commented and have reached out with your views on the View. We look forward to hearing everyone's comments and suggestions in the near future. Secondly, I would like to thank the community for their generous donations and the volunteers for their name, for their time that delivered food and gifts to our neighbors during Christmas. We are very thankful to have helped two senior ladies, one to find a permanent place to stay, and the other, we were able to pay her rent because she had been laid off because of the virus. We would also like to welcome, excuse me, Lyle Eady, who has volunteered to be our Director of Development. Mr. Eady will be reaching out to the community churches, businesses, and community leaders to explain and clarify our mission in the months to come. To reiterate, we are committed to serve the community through local volunteers, and their generous donations will be used to help citizens in a positive way. With the city manager beginning work on next year's budget, hopefully, we can have a voice in the process to enable us to continue our mission to assist and strengthen families and individuals. Through allocated monies, the View's board and volunteers will be able to assist, assess needed situations, and hopefully, follow through with positive results. We look forward to hearing from you. And by the way, if you would like a copy of our first quarter income statement, you can send us an email at info@theviewcrc.org. That's I N F O U C R C dot org, and we'll be glad to send that to anyone who requests it. Thank you for your time and hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Johnson, is that everyone?
Yes, ma'am.
Public announcements, awards, and recognitions, we have none. Staff comments, Mr. Collins.
Mayor, just wanted to follow up to Mr. Darnell, just to, just to make sure Mr. Darnell had received an email that I sent, and I think you, I think maybe you did, on our budgeting process. So the board is reminded, and I know Mr. Darnell is. The coming year budget, and we'll talk about this when we get into another agenda item, but the coming year budget is probably the most impactful annual budget the City of Fairview will have had in the last twenty years. Certainly the most impactful in the next ten. As a part of that, I reached out to Mr. Darnell via email and just let him know, and copied each of you on that, that if there's a request for funding, then I would need to get that request for funding by March thirty-one of this year so we can make, move forward with whatever those discussions were. So again, we'll talk a little more about this when we get into the, into the budget item tonight. But it will be really important for us to know what those requests are by that time. And that's, that's all I have for you.
Thank you, sir. Consent agenda, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Item ten, old business. Ordinance twenty, twenty dash twenty-seven. We have a public hearing on this. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Vice Mayor, I'll let you read the ordinance first.
A, ordinance twenty, twenty dash twenty-seven, number one, public hearing on item ten, A, two. Two, ordinance twenty, twenty dash twenty-seven, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview by rezoning one point eight nine acres of property located on Lake Road, Williamson County Tax Map, zero twenty-two, parcel one six eight point zero one, from C G Commercial General to R dash twenty, single-family medium-density residential. Owner Denise Pickle Mangram.
You'll give us your name and your address and...
Yep, Philip Caldwell, seven two zero five Sweetbrier Lane, Fairview, Tennessee. Definitely not Ms. Mangram. I'm actually just working to purchase it, the property.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your last...
Okay, yep, so I may, I may not, this may not be the same property. Am I, I may be at the wrong, on the wrong parcel here, but I know we were in the process of buying this and Tim Mangram, is this the same one Tim's working on, right? Okay, he just asked me to come up here and be here if you guys had any questions, but I'm, I was just making sure I was talking about the right parcel, sorry.
Do you want, why are you requesting the rezoning?
What's that?
Why are you requesting the rezoning?
From General Commercial to R twenty residential.
Mm-hmm.
With the intent of building houses on the R twenty lots.
Okay, any questions? Thank you, sir.
I, I do have a question, and not for you, sir, but I guess for comments. Does this, does this follow our current land use, or...
I think this is the public hearing.
This is a public hearing.
This is the public hearing. We'll, we'll get to the...
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, item two, ordinance twenty, twenty dash twenty-seven. Vice Mayor, if you'll read the ordinance, please.
I'm sorry, did I, I shouldn't have read that until now.
No, you should have read it before so we'll know what we're talking about. But now this is the official, we're hearing the ordinance.
I'm gonna reread it for this part.
You're gonna read it again, yes, just two.
Okay. Number two, ordinance twenty, twenty dash twenty-seven, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview by rezoning one point eight nine acres of property located at Lake Road, Williamson County Tax Map, zero two-two, parcel one six eight point zero one, from C G Commercial General to R twenty, single-family medium-density residential. Owner Denise Pickle Mangram.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second, now we'll have discussion.
Mayor, to answer Commissioner Dawson's previous question, Commissioner Dawson, currently, the, this parcel is zoned C G or Commercial General, which would certainly be out of the land use map as it exists for the section of Taylor Road. Taylor Road is residential. So with the division of this property, separating commercial to a front Highway ninety-six and separating residential to a front Lake Road, this would in fact be a more appropriate use of that property to be zoned from C G Commercial General to RS twenty.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Old Business, item B, public hearing on item ten, B two. Vice Mayor, if you will read what we're having the public hearing on.
Item B, ordinance twenty, twenty dash twenty-eight, number one, public hearing on item ten, B two. Number two, ordinance twenty, twenty dash twenty-seven, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview by rezoning one point zero four acres of property located on Lake Road, Williamson County Tax Map, zero two-two, parcel one seven six point zero zero, from RS forty, single-family low-density residential, to RS twenty, single-family medium-density residential. Owner Innovative Construction Company LLC.
Is there anyone here to speak on the public hearing? No, you're good.
Okay.
Surely, we can remember this law.
Right, so, so same thing, this is just a, an additional parcel to the side of the one, we're just trying to get the same zoning for both where it all complies and flows with what we already have going.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this? Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so if you have anything you'd like to say about the property being rezoned, this is your opportunity to tell us what you're thinking. If you'll leave your mask on, please. If you'll leave your mask on. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, my name is Helen Day. I live at seven two one five Lake Road, right adjacent, right next door to these properties.
Mm-hmm.
And I've never been to a median like this before, I don't know what to do.
You're good.
This is new to me, it's just that I don't understand what it means going from single to, what is it, going from single to medium, low-density to medium-density?
Well, RS forty means you have to have an acre lot. So they want to split this from a one-acre lot with one house to, they want to put two, they want to do an R twenty, which means you can have one house per half acre, so they want to put two houses on the lot.
So they can put two houses on that property as opposed to one?
Yes, ma'am. I believe I'm correct.
It has nothing to do with any kind of an apartment building or complex like that? Well, that's what I was just interested in because I live next door, and I don't want a bunch of buildings there, that's for sure.
Okay.
That was all I had to say.
Thank you so much, and I'm glad you came for your first time.
Yeah, thank you.
Come again.
I will.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this?
I thought that the...
You don't have to use your microphone.
Oh, ma'am, I'm so sorry.
And give us your name and your address.
Okay, Tiffany Wilson Mobley, seven three zero three Cox Run Court. I'm just trying to familiarize myself, so please excuse the question, but it might affect how you talk about this. So the medium-density, when we looked up what that meant, R twenty, that was single and it was one family or two-family, so it also would allow duplexes on the property? That's in the zoning ordinance.
Well, I think the developer just told us that that was not his plan.
Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you, thanks. Thank you for the clarification, that helps, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, item B two, ordinance twenty, twenty dash twenty-seven. Vice Mayor, if you will read item two, please.
Item two, ordinance twenty, twenty dash twenty-seven, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview by rezoning one point zero four acres of property located on Lake Road, Williamson County Tax Map, zero two-two, parcel one seven six point zero zero, from RS forty, single-family low-density residential, to RS twenty, I'm sorry, R twenty, single-family medium-density residential. Owner Innovative Construction Company LLC.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Item eleven, new business, appoint new planning commission member. Their term will expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Ms. Johnson, if you will read us our candidates, please, or our applicants.
Right, I'm going to butcher the first one, and I apologize.
That's why I wanted you to read them.
Thanks, Mayor. Richard Olzowski. Do you want me to do it one at a time, or list them all at once?
Let's list them all.
Okay, Mr. James Evans, Kyle Tortorelli, Chris McDonald, Sarah Bush, and Tiffany Wilson Mobley.
Thank you. I will open the floor now for discussion for an appointment to the Planning Commission.
Move to approve, Richard, I'm not even going to try to say it because I'd do it worse than that. How do you say it, sir?
I answer anything that begins with an O probably by hesitation.
Oh.
That's, that's good to know.
It's Olzowski.
Oh, shh, see, I can't even... It's the mask.
Would you like me to introduce myself?
That would be great, thank you.
Thank you very much, my name is Rick Olzowski. I live at seven five six two Aubrey Ridge Drive. I've owned that property since September of two thousand sixteen. I've lived in the Nashville area for fourteen years, having moved here from northeast Ohio to take a position with LP Building Products as Executive Vice President of Sales and Marketing for LP Building Products. I retired or escaped my incarceration in corporate America after thirty-eight years in, five years ago, five and a half years ago, and at that time began doing residential real estate development and investing. And I built over a hundred homes and sold them in the Nashville area. My wife and I live on the property there, which is at the end of Aubrey Ridge, on twenty-seven acres. Understand there's some historical value of that property with the spring there down at the bottom of that property back in the days of Jingo. I'm not quite sure what I got myself in for, but I've taken my residential real estate business down to almost nothing now, and I just turned sixty-four. I'm approaching actually being retired and taking up the challenge that many in the industry have had of getting involved in the local community. My wife and I have been here full-time for the last year and a half, continue to develop our property there and improve it. And I just see that Fairview has such a great potential in the future in almost a blank canvas in an area that, of course, we're facing huge opportunities and, and challenges of growth in the metro area of Nashville. And I'd just like to be part of what that canvas might turn out to be in the Fairview area because this is by choice our forever home for, for the rest of our lives. So I want to be able to bring my talents and, and skills and knowledge and contacts in the industry. I, I serve on the Board of Directors of the Home Builders Association of Middle Tennessee, so I know literally all of the major developers and builders and, and real estate developers in the region personally. But as I said, my own business, I'm really kind of trying to get retired so I can tie flies more and, and catch more trout. So really, just my incentive is a desire to, to be helpful and to continue to be a contributing member to the community.
Thank you, sir. So we have a nomination on the floor. Is there a second? Are there other nominations?
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Chris McDonald.
Are there others? Why aren't we shaking our head?
Was there just, was there a second on the first motion, all right.
Okay, so is there a second for Mr. McDonald?
Can we hear from him?
We sure can.
Chris McDonald, seventy-five fifteen, Nathaniel Woods.
Okay, I think you're gonna have to get closer to your microphone.
Chris McDonald, seventy-five fifteen, Nathaniel Woods. So I'm wanting to run a lot for the same reason this gentleman is. I do not have the background that he does or the life experiences, but I do have a passion to be involved. I've been looking for different ways to get involved in the community. I've served just short of two years with the Fire Department as a volunteer. I did have a, a chance to run for Commissioner this time around, which just opened my eyes to everything going on with the city and things like that, and just kind of, I guess, increased that flame inside me to be involved with the community. When this opportunity presented itself, I wanted to jump on board. I am a real estate agent, that is not my motivation for being involved on the Planning Commission. I understand that that comes with some reservations for some, but it is not my motivation to run. I did work in corporate America for a while, I've lived in Fairview since two thousand fifteen. Moved to Nashville in two thousand twelve. As it stands, my wife and I plan on this being our forever home as well. We're raising two children here. One of our, our oldest child has started in the community schools. So again, just wanting to be involved with the community and continue to see it grow in the right direction.
Thank you. Do I have, can I second one of the nominations, Mr. Potter? Is that Mr. Collins?
Mayor, Mr. Potter could, may address us differently. However, Commissioner Lucas offered a motion, that motion was not seconded.
Okay.
So that motion has died.
Okay.
Now there's been a motion made by Commissioner Butler. That motion would be in order for a second. If there's a lack of second, then that motion will have died as well.
Okay.
Have to have a motion, a motion and a second for whoever gets voted on for this position.
Okay.
I'll second Chris McDonald.
We have a motion and a second, is there discussion?
Mayor, I just, just want to state, Mr. McDonald did run for the Board of Commissioners this, this past election commission. He's been, he's been at the Planning Commission meetings where we've been doing some of the workshops for the rezonings, he's just shown a heavy interest, has been asking me a lot of questions even before the election, just about planning, about zoning, the future, our comp plan. And so that's kind of my, my reason for the nomination.
Any other discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Mayor, if I could just remind, I think the last few times we've had open on the Planning Commission, we've had one applicant maybe, so it's really encouraging to see six applicants come out tonight. In June, there are three seats up for renewal, so just please make sure and, and keep that in the air mark, and hopefully you'll still be interested in applying.
Item B, resolution zero one dash twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the City of Fairview, Tennessee Fire Department to participate in a grant process from assistance to firefighters grant. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Item C, ordinance twenty-one, twenty-one dash zero one, an ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, further amending the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Collins.
Mayor, any members of the commission, as you are aware, we're required to pass an annual budget, of course. Our budget year, our fiscal year is July one through June thirty, so we're currently under the twenty twenty-one fiscal year budget. Per state regulations, your fiscal year is the year that the budget ends. That's why we're in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. The staff and I work pretty hard to make sure that over the course of a year, we...
The staff and I work pretty hard to make sure that over the course of year, we recalculate our budget to make, to ensure that not only we're working within our budget, but also to do some forecasting for remainder of the year expenses and go ahead and start planning for the coming budget year. Those, those budget years come around a little faster than we expect them to. Uh, the budget that you have before you, and there are two documents. The first is the, the ordinance document that was submitted. The second is an item that I gave each of you that is simply the budget detail that works behind that. Uh, I will give you just a brief rundown of the changes from the existing budget to the amended budget, and they're relatively small. But we, we do need to amend this just to make sure that we do meet the state regulations. The first is a change in the hiring of the city engineer to full-time status. In our budget, we had engineering costs that were budgeted out of the administrative department's budget. Obviously, with the hiring of the engineer, Kevin will be working in the planning department, so those expenses will be transferred over to the planning department from the administrative side. It's effectively a financial wash, but we do have to reclassify the expenditures for the remainder of the year. Uh, the second item that is a change for us is we had an, anticipated receiving some COVID expense reimbursement for some expenditures we had in last year's budget and part of this year's budget. We, we discussed that when this budget was originally passed. We had an expectation we would get that. However, we did not budget for it specifically, just because until you know, you don't know. Uh, we have received that money, it's a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Um, as was discussed at the original bu- budget discussion for earlier in the year, we have transitioned that money to capital and public works, um, just for some items that they had to have that, um, in this case, cost us no tax dollars. This is reimbursement to us, so it's a, it's not found money, but it's welcome money we didn't expect to get and puts us ahead for some capital expenditures there. And lastly, uh, you may be aware that under the LISO program, or the program where the police department is able to obtain surplus military equipment, we're able to sell those, that equipment after a certain period of time, in this case, twelve months, use those dollars to purchase equipment for the police department. Uh, we believe we're going to experience an extra fifty thousand dollars in LISO sales this year. So we have, in this item, increased, in this budget, increased our miscellaneous revenue or surplus sales by that fifty thousand dollars, and increased the expenditure for capital in the police department by that same fifty thousand dollars in hopes that we'll be able to purchase two additional patrol cars. Um, as most of you are aware, the most recent substantial purchase of any patrol cars the city of Fairview did was in two thousand fourteen. Uh, most of those vehicles have exhausted their useful life, and this is an easy way, and a creative way, from the police department and through administration to replace those capital needs without using city taxpayer dollars to do so. Once we, um, pass this amended budget, and it does take two readings, and we'll present this back at the next meeting, get this amended budget adopted, we will immediately move into the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget, which starts July one of, of this year. Uh, you may recall that one of the things we've talked about for some time is a bond issue for some infrastructure projects. We have a couple of things in our favor, or working in our favor, that we know is coming our way. The city of Fairview regionally is one of the few cities that has actually seen an uptick in its sales tax receipts during COVID nineteen. Uh, many of our community partners and neighboring cities have been stagnant in their revenue or seeing a decrease in their revenue. We have in fact seen a slight uptick, which is, which is good for us. Uh, the second thing we know is through some property evaluations that will likely take place, take place by the county next year, we will be able to afford finally a bond issue to do some specific capital work. Um, the proposed list that we have is a rebuild or reconstruction of Chester Road, which desperately needs to be done. The replacement of a series of bridges throughout the city, and a right-of-way purchase for Old Nashville Road and Northwest Highway in anticipation of needing to widen those roads in the future and having the right-of-way to be able to do that. That will afford us not only right-of-way, but u- utility relocation and other things we need to do to ensure that we are prepared for our future. So as soon as we pass this, or you pass this, we'll move right into that budget work. Again, that's going to be fairly extensive. It will take us a couple of months to do, but we believe that now is the time, if we're going to consider a bond issue, that this will be the year to do it. I did meet with our bond, our agency representatives earlier this week. You may recall, or some of you may recall, that in two thousand fourteen, the city, uh, received a bond rating of A from Standards and Pours, which is not a bad bond rating, but certainly looked to, to increase. Um, through two thousand sixteen, seventeen, we did install a financial plan, actually in two thousand fourteen, and we fortified that in two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. Standard and Pours, um, without our request, upgraded our bond rating from an A to a double A minus. Um, I understand that anything that ends in a minus typically is not good, but in this case, improving from an A to double A minus is exceptional for the city of Fairview. Uh, current bond money rates are about one and a quarter percent. That's as close to free as we're going to get likely in the foreseeable future. So we will move ahead with the establishment of a, a list for you guys' capital so we can consider the bond rating and move forward with that as we move forward with the, the budget year that begins July one. One other thing that we hoped to do, and I believe we will be able to do as a part of this budget that you have before you, is to pay off the public safety equipment lease a year early. As you, you may know, because of some constraints that were put on by the county through the implementation of a new radio system two years ago, we had to lease purchase about six hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment on a four-year lease purchase so that we could maintain our public safety radio system, particularly our police and fire. That expense is about a hundred forty-five thousand dollars a year. We have two payments remaining. One's due in August of twenty twenty-one, the second is due in August of twenty twenty-two. We believe, based on our numbers today, that we will be able to pay that off a year early. We'll make both payments in August of twenty twenty-one. That will free up money for the bond issue going forward. So we're trying to be proactive to secure our cash position and also make sure we're moving ahead on, on the capital bond work. That, that's more of a broader discussion than I, I hoped to give, but that's kind of an overview of where we are financially, and I'd be glad to answer any questions on any of that, um, that you may have now or in the future.
Can you tell me which roads, again, you were purchasing right-of-ways?
For the discussion of purchasing right-of-way, um, what has been talked about is Old Nashville Road and Northwest Highway.
Okay, thank you.
Now, um, portions of Northwest Highway, not all of it, but a portion of it, and most of, of Old Nashville Road. Again, Mayor, I would add, that's all subject to, to board approval and all such as that. Uh, one reason why it's important to have all of that list done in advance is, first, most importantly, you have to enumerate that list and the projects you're going to do, including their budgets, at the time that you apply, um, for the bond funding. You, you must secure what those are and state what those are, and they must be, um, taxes exempt qualified projects, and these are. The second thing that we must consider as we go forward with the coming year budget is, uh, for a bond issue to remain tax exempt, all of the monies received by the city for a, through a bond issue must be expended within three years. So as we move forward the bond issue, once we receive those dollars, the dollars can't be committed within three years. They must be expended within three years. So once we go to bond issue, um, and the monies are received, we need to be as close to shovel-ready as we can be for the projects that are going to require media work.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Communication from the mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for everybody coming out for the workshop tonight. Thank you for sending us information. Thank you for staying involved. Thank you for reaching out and educating us and just sending us anything. That's what we're here for, so thank you, guys.
Commissioner Dawson?
Same thing. Uh, thank you, everybody, for coming out, and especially all of the folks that, uh, submitted their application for the, uh, the, the planning and zoning. Uh, would, would love to have all of you come back, would love to meet with all of you individually to get to know you better. Uh, we certainly need your help. Uh, we have positions come open all the time, and, uh, we would love your input. Uh, we would love for you to, to put in for these positions. Uh, it's, it's wonderful to have a, a group of people to select from instead of just, uh, one person showing up and, and taking the position. Uh, you know, being involved in your community, um, is important, certainly important, uh, to benefit the entire community. So, um, thank you for coming. Uh, it, it's a big deal just to, to put a foot forward, uh, just to submit your application, so thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Here, Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I too want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, um, the citizens for coming out, the developer for coming out and taking their time, uh, to meet with us. Uh, also want to apologize for missing the last meeting. Uh, I do not like to miss meetings, um, at all, but a few days before that meeting, I wasn't feeling well and wanted to err on the side of caution with everything going around, so. Do apologize for missing last week, um, or two weeks ago, excuse me. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Thank you. Um, I would like to say thank you to Dan Allen and his group, um, for, um, being willing to speak to the, um, concerned neighbors and, and just, um, being open to talk to anyone who wants to talk to him. I think that's a move in the right direction as far as anything we develop out here. I hope that other developers and builders will follow suit and do the same thing, because I think what we want out here, um, as commissioners and, um, community is to just all work together for the best of everyone. I think that's what's most important. So that was exciting. I hope to see more of this, and, um, all that have, um, expressed interest in the different, um, like, planning commission and zoning and different boards that we have, just keep on doing that, because we have openings, um, all the time. So this is not like just pick one and it's done. We've got more coming, and it's just exciting to see everyone, uh, wanting to be a part and get involved. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. I would like to repeat that. I'm so glad to see so many people interested in being on the planning commission. I know it takes bravery sometime to raise your hand and, and offer your time, and it's valuable, and we appreciate that so much. I also appreciate the developer who would take the time and bring his crew here to answer questions and try to address all your concerns. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. And we.